The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
On page three, at the top of the page F and G. At the bottom of the page, 11, B, one and two. Page four. E, one and two. G, one, two and three. All of the items on page five. And on page six, number four, at the top of the page, for your consideration for consent agenda item.
Mayor and Board, item C under Board Business. Need some additional work on that, so we're requesting that we remove that item.
All right.
Mr. McFarren. We pull 11, item two. We need to make some specific findings of fact.
Findings of fact, that will be fine. Roman, number 11, B, two, we are eliminating from consent due to some requirements to make specific findings of fact with regard to property clearing. Any other changes, additions, deletions, whatever.
Mr. McFarren, let me make sure. The credit card policy did not make the consent, did it?
It should not have Alderman Perkins.
I just make sure.
Let's find it there, let's be sure.
It's on there. Okay, thank you, sir.
T and B, it did not.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move approval of the agenda with these items added to a consent agenda and other items, changes, removals as noted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Approval of the minutes of City of Starkville Board, April 21st. Do we have a second?
Four minutes.
Second. Motion and second for April 21st. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Request approval of minutes for May the 5th.
May 5th, minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Comments by the Mayor and the Board of Alderman. We have most of the police officers not here tonight. We have the records clerk Ross Harold, public works drinking water operator sanitation department driver, Odie Harris. See here?
Ross.
Right there. All right. Ross, stand up. You would, but we'd look at you. Thanks, sir.
Odie Harris and Dennis Williams.
Williams.
Dennis Williams was here until we recessed and went over to our...
Okay.
And my law.
Maybe we should hold the introduction of the year.
This brings us down to the citizens' comments.
Mr. Roman, when is your last day here sometime soon?
The 28th of this month.
Yes, sir, and I know you've... I've been on board since '93. You've been with the city for a long, long time. How many years?
Eleven.
Eleven. I thought about as long as I've been here, but I just wanted to say that I certainly appreciate all of your hard work and you've done a very good job and you've done a lot of contributions for the city and we just want to thank you and I wish you the best of success in all of your future endeavors.
Thank you. Looking on the calendar this week, I'm reminded we also have a celebration of sorts. This is the third anniversary of our no smoking ordinance in Starkville. If you recall, we're the first incorporated city to go no smoking and of course the rest of the state followed, but that's an important anniversary for us, that three-year anniversary.
That brings us down to our citizen comments, which we allow citizens to have approximately three minutes to express any likes or dislikes.
Agreed to the Mayor and Board, my name is Alton Watson. A lot of people are very upset at the way that the election was handled. A lot of the people were distraught. They went to Boittown, to Boittown, to Fire Station, from Fire Station to Mount Peeter. That disencouraged a lot of people. And they want to know what happened, why and how come. And so if Ms. Daniel and Marquita can give us the exact date that these things supposed to be undone, then we'll feel better. But the people are very upset that things didn't work out like it did. And the letters that we get in the mail, we are putting them in the trash. That we feel like that if you didn't do anything later for you, we cannot trust you, come for you. Vice Mayor Perkins, the citizens would like not receive any more letter.
Well, that's my prerogative, Mr. Turner. I'm a public official individual. I can do what I desire and I'm responsible account for my own actions. So if you have any personal dislikes about me, you can express them to me at any time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mayor and Board and to the people that may be here, I have a vital concern coming from our community and I would like to say to Vice Mayor Roy, I would like to say to all of you that are here, I would like to say I appreciate the services that you all do and I was pleased with the results from the election. You know, I don't know what happened, but I was pleased with it and anytime anybody write me about anything, I look at it. But I do have a concern tonight. In the newspaper, we had one of our police officers, and this is a personal conflict, I know and whatever, but we had one of our police officers who was, you know, had a drug, got a drug problem. We were trying to talk to our children about drugs. I don't know if the screening of the police officers or what is done throughout the community about this, but it's a vital concern to me. I think maybe we should form a group, a citizen group, that can come up and perhaps talk, you know, to see what we can do as a community about the drug problem with our police officers because this is vital. Our children are here, they get arrested, arrested every day by these people. And it's something that I really want to look in as the citizens of Starkville and I thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to make a comment? We'll move on. We have a public appearance tonight with Alfie Anderson, the Cub Master, and that Cub Scouts of Wolf Den, PAC 14, and Johnny Biggert guarding a civil civic water conservation project. Y'all ready to make your proposal?
Yes, sir. First of all, let me thank you for having us tonight. I'm Derek, I'm Bryce. Mr. Biggert.
I'm a Cub Scout.
We're working on a conservation patch called the Purple Panda. And what that entails is they have knowledge in not only fishing birds and growing something, but they also are to do a conservation project. And I found out about Mr. Biggert. He's from Jackson and he's with Hattie Witcher.
Michigan Department, Cardinal Department.
Yes. The DEQ. Okay, got it. Anyway, so he's working with us and what our plan is, we want to teach these kids that they have an impact, whether it be positive or negative on our community. And they have a negative impact when they litter, when they dump things in the drain and not dispose it properly. That's a negative impact. That affects people, not only people, but our environment and things like that. We're teaching our boys to have positive impact and that's what we're trying to teach them is to be stewards of our environment. So instead of littering, instead of dumping drains, we want to help the community. And by this, we want to clean out the drains. We have a thing proposed, a plan, that we would clean out the drains, we would mark the drains with a marker that would make you think before you dump. Okay? We've done already down Main Street. As a den, we did that. It was a huge success. What we propose is we would like to expand this even larger and put out another 200 to 300 markers. It would not just include PAC 14, but it would be more diverse, PAC 27, PAC 11, there's also a PAC 30 that would join us and it would be a full-day event from nine to three. We'd offer them pizza for lunch, but we'd also have a program that Mr. Biggert would put on, more educational ones for the kids, and I'm going to let him tell you about that.
I've been involved with programs this night, 2005. I've got some hint cards I'd like to give to you. Better explain what's going to happen to the kids. I apologize, I didn't realize there was this many members. I'm from the city of Madison, we don't have any elected officials.
He's not elected, that's all right. This mayor continues to do it anyway.
We have two objects here. One is a door hanger that the children would be putting on the doors if they go to a subdivision. The other one is a actual write-up of the project. Since I've been involved with it in the last four years throughout the state, they have put, placed approximately 10,000 markers on storm drains in Mississippi. Civic groups, church groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, city employees. And as Ms. Anderson said, we're trying to educate the kids. We adults are the caretakers of the environment. And what we do to educate these young kids, the boys and the girls, is what they're going to have to live with. And we can teach them, when they roll that window down, don't throw that Coke can out. Don't throw the litter can, litter bag out. Put it in a garbage can somewhere, dispose of it. A lot of people think these storm drains end up into a suicide. It doesn't. It goes into the nearest creek, river, and Starkville here is going to end up in the Tom Biggert River by way of Columbus Lake or go south into Alabama into Tom Biggert. DEQ has what we call a priority watershed and these are streams of big rivers in the state of Mississippi that are in excessive pollution through EPA or the state of Mississippi. And we have projects and contracts to try to go back and clean these streams and rivers up in the state. And these young scouts are going to learn why you don't do this. I've got a couple of models I'll be bringing in with me on June 6th when they do the big project. If it's authorized, educate them about groundwater and stormwater pollution. I work in a non-forth source, that's rainfall event. When it rains, what's going to happen to the water? It's going to throb into the ground or it's going to drain off. And what we're concerned with is what drains and query drains.
Mr. Biggert, what he does is he provides us with the buckets that we need, supplies that we need. I looked into see how much it might cost for Starkville to have their own personal marker. It's $2.75 a marker. If we go through their department, it's absolutely free to us. But Boy Scouts being a nonprofit organization, we always have to use our resources. That's one thing that we're taught in Boy Scouts. He comes with the buckets, the scrub brush to get off any debris, the brush, whisk brush to brush off of that, and what else did we do?
We glued the...
And so if you're ever downtown, look at the storm drains. These guys have already been there. One thing that we really do want to do is educate, and they all wear their orange vests so you guys know that we're on the streets. We also signed a waiver so that the city of Starkville is not responsible for any accidents or injuries that might happen. Not only do they sign one for you, but we also sign one for Boy Scouts of America and for their organization as well. So we would really appreciate your consideration on this project. We're excited about it. The boys are excited about it and we want to help the community in any way that we can. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Thank you very much. I just saw someone yesterday morning just blow the grass out of the street.
And Mr. Biggert, Madison doesn't need any more officials. They got Ms. Mayor.
No, sir, I can take it. We've got contractors that don't like Mayor Mary, but we who live there, we love her.
Absolutely.
Actually, I did attach a newspaper article that came out about a month and a half ago from one of them in the city of South Mississippi that I think will be educational for you to read. I'm not big or sorry.
Okay. This brings us down to a second public hearing on the proposed sidewalk ordinance. Jim, are you ready for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have no further comments. I've talked about this one.
See the engineer? Plant is on location. Is Edward around?
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Edward, you've got to pay attention.
What you have on your packet are changes from the last sidewalk committee meeting. And basically, from the last board meeting, we left with the intent, no one taken out, some one specific language about requiring certain percentage of the capital improvement. All that link that brought up a concern about the airport and requiring sidewalks or a new hangar project out there, we addressed that in one of the exclusions. And we also added in some language about trying to target the construction of these sidewalks into a yet-to-be-determined sidewalk master plan. The committee has chosen that that will be their next project, to come up with a master plan, a prioritized list of sidewalks, and that would be represented to be used for the implementation of the funding. Any other questions, I'll be happy to talk about.
Would board members have questions they have of Edward?
Edward, I have one on 41C. This talks about at least 36 inches of clearance. We have more rubbers in there like he did by the way of the sidewalk.
Right. We talked about that. I don't think that, that's definitely the intent of the committee and I don't think that'd be a problem. With at least 36 inches of clearance in the sidewalk path.
Any other board members?
Mayor. Edward, just for clarification purposes, can you summarize up the ordinance again? Under section 3, 3.1, we talk about all new single-family residential developments. So this would be something that does not currently exist. It would be a brand-new neighborhood. If we pass this ordinance, it would require sidewalks. If you have an existing subdivision and you're building a house in that subdivision, would someone be required to build a sidewalk? And then for renovations to a commercial properties, can you talk about the guidelines where the city would go back in, with the requirements for that commercial development to have a sidewalk?
Non-family residential developments, which would include commercial, industrial, educational, what do you mean, non-residential, if they had 50% or more of the taxable value of the property improved, if they made improvements in its integrity, they would be required to put a sidewalk along their frontage.
So it's a big picture. If we pass this ordinance, all new development in Starkville will be required to have a sidewalk and will be, in essence, starting to connect the existing sidewalks by requiring commercial development that goes through major renovations to put in sidewalks. And then third, which we haven't talked about, the city will also going forward make an investment in sidewalks as part of a new line item that would be requested or created from this ordinance that we would also be working to develop sidewalks. Jim?
That's not entirely true. There already is a line item in our budget as far as line training and all this ordinance is doing is asking you to not remove that line item. It's not telling you how much you could put in that line item.
And it might be an argument that the existing line item is specific to ADA improvements. The way I understand it, what this envisions is actually to have an additional line item under our current infrastructure so that we would have, for example, as we currently do streets, drainage, we would now add an additional line item for sidewalks in addition to the ADA improvement.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to summarize for everybody what this ordinance does because I know we've seen it many, many times, but not everybody has seen it as often.
And Jim and Joe, one more comment about the line item and all that is fine. State law regulates the format of a municipal budget and that that's put into, the state law requirements does not include that level of line item. That of course can be an internal line item to the city's internal budget, but would not necessarily be a line item specified in the state law required budget format.
Are there any questions from the audience?
I have a couple of questions. The annex building, court, we do not have any decent sidewalk. And when the jury said that you'd be back at one o'clock, you can't be making it to the courthouse at one. You got to be there at one. But as you come out that sidewalk where it used to be the cleaner, you got nothing to rock. And it's making that a lawyer or anyone hadn't failed, you know, right there. We do not have decent sidewalk or coming from the jail to the court. I got to walk in the street and then you get hit.
Have you not brought that out to the committee? You're off, Mr. Turner.
Yes, I have. Last meeting.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Turner's comments are well-taken, good comments. Remember, we're talking about county-owned public buildings and facilities, not city-owned. And so a matter that needs to be taken up with the Board of Supervisors.
Any other comments from the public? Right to close on the public hearing. Should be sitting so close.
Mayor. I'm going to make a comment. This is what will hopefully be the first step in seeing a lot of these kind of quality like agreements in our community because one of the intents behind this ordinance is to keep an existing problem that is not having adequate sidewalks from getting worse as the city of Starkville continues to grow and expand. And so we're hoping to be able to fix that problem. And then I believe the next step with the sidewalk committee will then be to look at sidewalk plans in the city so that we can start to go back and fill in the gaps for all the places that currently exist in the city that don't have sidewalks needed and start to prioritize that. So this has just been, it's been a wonderful experience. We've worked on this ordinance for about nine or 10 months now and it's been a labor of love.
So, I mean, you're making a motion that we approve this proposed sidewalk ordinance?
Well, I mean, I saw it was later on the agenda, but I'll go ahead and...
Next item on the Board Business. Come on, Richard.
Mayor and Board, with the one caveat of that additional statement involving right-of-way clearance, I would move approval of ordinance 2009 dash, whichever number comes next. An ordinance requiring regulated construction and maintenance of public sidewalks in the city of Starkville, Octobah County, this is it.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Mr. Lincoln, did you get that down?
Yes, sir.
All of you, you've heard the motion and the second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Pass it.
About the reservation, fire reservation.
For what?
The fire reservation. The board has to adopt a fire reservation.
Make the motion on that, Richard.
Okay. Mayor and Board, I approve approval of resolution number 2009 dash, whatever, the sidewalk fine resolution for the city of Starkville, Mississippi.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Edward. Next item is considering, consideration of adopting a credit card policy for the city of Starkville. Is that your opinion, Ms. Porter?
I craft the policy, but it came about as a result of multiple, mainly discussions that have been with the department heads over some of the issues in getting reservations and hotel reservations and travel reservations. And I tried to craft it so that it would be strictly directed to the ability to get hotel, flight and car reservations for the travel that in particular the police department and the fire department do. So I know Ms. Outlaw had something to say about it. I think she's not real pleased with it. Just a full disclosure, but the police chief and the fire chief feel that it's really important to them being able to handle the schools, the many schools that their personnel go to. There's been problems in the past and I for one have provided my credit card to make hotel reservations for some of the schools that they've needed. And that becomes a little bit of a problem for some of the personnel who either don't have credit cards or are not comfortable doing that. So it's intended so that the credit card use would actually not generate any expenses on the credit card. What's, what it's intended to do is just simply be able to hold a hotel reservation or make a flight reservation that would then be paid for by a city check. But that just gives us some flexibility. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the verbiage in there or making revisions, but the intent was to allow the department heads to be able to facilitate the school reservations for flight, hotel and car. And if you can see, it is restricted solely to that. It's not allowing it for meals, it's not allowing it for anything else. So that's sort of a quick summation.
Mr. Perkins, do you have any questions you seem to be interested in this?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Mayor. To the city clerk, Ms. Marquita Outlaw, I want to draw your attention to this proposed policy. A notice on the bottom of page two, the proposed policy that was obviously drafted by our chief administrative officer, provides and states that the city clerk is the administrator of this policy and shall be responsible for the issuance and retrieval of assigned municipal credit cards to the department heads, and it goes on and on. And since this policy designates you as administrator, I am interested in hearing what comments, if any, that you may have with regard to this policy and also in your comments. I am interested in knowing whether you're requesting for this board to adopt this policy. I understand, you know, I just want just a clean, straightforward answer, but I understand that you're, you'll do whatever the board asks of you, but I do want your comments as to your thoughts about this proposed policy, the language as it currently exists, and whether or not you are in agreement with this policy as it occurs, this thing. Could you address those for me, Ms. Outlaw? Could you come forward ahead and address those?
In the order in which they were asked, please.
Well, as you said, it's going to put all the responsibility of this, the credit card policy, the expenses, the reconciliation on already, you know, department that's stretched to the limits. And I know what the intentions are for the actuality of it hits and there is more to the credit card policy than what was intended, then it lends to, and I don't want to say this misuse of the credit card. And that's what I'm trying to prevent, this misuse of the credit card. I for one would like the board not to adopt the policy, but of course, as Alderman Perkins has said, I will honor, you know, your decision. But of course, as all the partners have said, I will honor, you know, your decision.
Yeah, of course, by law would be the city clerk's responsibility to keep up with this regardless of what the policy had to say.
Exactly, exactly.
That's one of the financial functions.
That's true.
I see no problem in giving it a try. If there are problems, then the city mayor and board can back up and change and cancel the thing. Now, admittedly, there are municipalities across the state and some counties across the state that have had problems with credit card. It may be because they did not go into it with as rigid a policy and just got them and passed them out, and here we win. So I think it might be worth a try. The police department, fire department, others strongly support for reservation, travel reservation purposes only, not actually payment of credit card bills. The policy, why not give it a try?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to comment to the clerk.
Madam clerk, I know since I've been on the board since ninety-three, we haven't had a policy. And I think that the board, in the past, when you have an employee who wants to go out of the city or the state on approved board missions, that we have had this ongoing, standing policy to approve for in advance in instances for the cost for the travel. So is there any problem with that? Is that not working anymore?
Well, and with that, if the, I found that if it's far enough in advance, the board approves it, we cut the check, send the check to the entity, and everything's fine. What has happened is it's not far enough in advance. We can't cut the check to get it to a company far enough in advance. I've asked that the department heads do a little more planning and get it to where it's, they can, if they know they're going on travel, get it in, we can get it processed, and get the company sent to the entity. And I don't, I just think that that's the best way to, the best policy to have, is to pay it and utilize it, just have the foresight to know when we're going downtown, we're traveling.
Ms. Lauren?
Oh, Miss Mayor, a comment about what Mayor Birkin, Ms. Outlaw said. And of course, with Ms. Outlaw, in terms of planning, getting checks to the entity and so forth, all that's fine, and that's how actually they would end up getting paid in the situation. In our work at the university, we do meetings all over the state. We're finding more and more, they simply will not reserve and hold a hotel room without a credit card for any period of time, certainly not going to let you take two weeks of whatever it is to get a check to them. We're finding that increasingly difficult. Every meeting we have now, there are comments of that sort from participants. And so if the intent of this policy is to allow for reservation of sleeping rooms and other things related to travel, but that the actual payment of the bill, the hotel room, the rental vehicle, the airplane ticket, whatever, is by purchase order and check, again, see no wrong with giving it a try. Could even make this a trial policy to be reviewed in six months. And if it's having problems and departments are going to have to, with some degree of rigidity, department heads carefully monitor what's happening in their department.
So do we have a motion, or not have a motion?
I would move then that we adopt the credit card policy, subject to a six-month trial period, after which time it would be reviewed to see if it's properly working. And Ms. Outlaw is, of course, to monitor this as the city clerk is supposed to, the department heads carefully monitor this. Mr. Lincoln even came up with a sample form that he put on the table, which is a good form internally for a department. And city clerk, you track things, you can, of course, massage this however you might want to do it, but a procurement card, procurement, what they call it at the university, credit card usage sheet, as a way to keep track of this. But it's going to be incumbent upon department heads only, that's who's responsible, to make sure the thing is operated properly in their department. And any problems that occur, the individual that caused the problem is liable for that expenditure, and the city can absolutely end it or change it. So, Mr. Mayor, I do move adoption of the policy on the trial basis for six months.
Do we have a second? Motion in second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Edward, you here? Next item is consideration or authorization of the electoral parking schedule of rules and regulations that include establishment of a departmental deposit policy.
As you may, we're asking for approval of our rules and regulations to include the deposit policy in the schedule of fees and charges. These items actually tie in with several other items that we've already...